Evening, it is by thirty, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting order. If I could just remind everybody to make sure that, well, you guys don't have microphones in there, do you? If you remember to turn your microphones on here, because I understand that it was people that call in are having difficulties hearing. So if you can just speak up, we'll hope that this works a little better tonight. Hey, we'll go ahead and call the meeting order, we'll begin with invocation, Andrew Lee, would you be so kind?
Bob, we'd like to ask you for your guidance and wisdom as we make decisions that will make massive improvements and take care of our city for the long term in the future. Here tonight, we ask that you will make sure that you look over our community in our states as we are dealing with this health crisis. In your name, amen.
We'll call.
Thank you.
Miss Lee.
Here.
Beckenstoss.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Lucas.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Carmen.
Here.
Rieker.
Here.
Ostendorf.
Here. All right, I would like to go over the meeting procedures in case someone that is in the audience that is on the phone or on Zoom. The public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please state your name and address and limit remarks to three minutes or less. Out of respect to city employees, we request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or mayor and individually and in violation will be declared out of order. Our open meetings after current copy of the Open Meetings Act of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the Capitol chambers and in the conference room. We'll begin with consent agenda. All matters under consent agenda are considered by the city council be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may however remove items from consent by request. All right, item number one is approved minutes of special meeting on April first, regular meeting on April seventh, twenty twenty. Item number two, approved application by the Platt Inc., DVA Platt Bar for a special designated license on June nineteenth, twenty twenty from eight AM to one AM and June twentieth, twenty twenty from eight AM to one AM at the Platt Bar, one nineteen West Sixth Street or at Deer Garden. Item number three is an application of Christopher Burke as liquor license manager at Ruby Tuesday located twenty-three twenty South Jefferson Street to the Liquor Control Commission with no recommendation.
We approve items one through three, consent agenda.
Second.
We'll call please.
Miss Lee.
Aye.
Beckenstoss.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lucas.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Carmen.
Aye.
Rieker.
Aye.
Ostendorf.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Regular agenda, item number four, approved mayor's appointment of Matthew Kibben for the position of city administrator.
I move that we approve the appointment, mayor's appointment of Matthew Kibben for the position of city administrator.
Second.
And I believe that Matt is online if anybody has any questions of Matt.
Is there anything that he would like to say?
Matt, would you like to say a few words?
Testing.
Yeah, we hear you.
We hear you.
Great. Well, I appreciate the thoughtful process associated with the position and look forward to serving the city of North Platte, working with all of you to determine the priorities and also in conjunction with the staff to assist you with those priorities. So again, I appreciate the opportunity and look forward to beginning work as soon as I'm complete with self-quarantine, which is tough on a day like today, but that would be made further.
Thank you, Matt.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Miss Lee.
Aye.
Beckenstoss.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lucas.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Carmen.
Aye.
Rieker.
Aye.
Ostendorf.
Aye. All right, thank you, congratulations, Matt, we're excited to get you started.
Thank you, yes, I did hear that, thank you.
You're welcome, Matt, now you can tuck in and watch, I guess, if you choose to do so. All right, item number five, city's Board of Equalization to approve assessment schedule for water extension district number two-six-three, beginning at the existing water main at on the two thousand block of West Eighteenth Avenue, then west approximately two hundred and fifty-five feet to the intersection of North Emory Avenue, then south along North Emory Avenue approximately one hundred and ninety-five feet to the existing water main.
We sit as the Board of Equalization and approve assessment schedule for water extension district number two-six-three, second.
Miss Lee.
Aye.
Beckenstoss.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lucas.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Carmen.
Aye.
Rieker.
Aye.
Ostendorf.
Aye. All right, that motion passes, eight through. Item number five, city's, oh wait, I already did have one, six. City's Board of Equalization to approve assessment schedule for sanitary sewer extension district number three-four-eight along East Sixth Street starting at eighteen thirteen East Sixth Street and continuing west approximately four hundred and seventy-five feet.
We sit as the Board of Equalization again and approve assessment schedule for sanitary sewer extension district number three-four-eight, second.
A question on this. Since this is outside of the city limits, what type of notification is given to the respective landowners that this is gonna be taking place? This whole deal with Roosevelt kinda opened my eyes to some things and things that I wasn't aware of and maybe that's my responsibility, but I'm just curious, you know, what, what type of notification is given to the respective landowners?
Is Tom here? Oh, come on, here we go, thank you, Tom. Did you hear that question?
Yes, I did hear the question, it was a good question. Actually, what we do is we send out notices to the people affected, but they are not sent by registered letter, they are merely sent, sorry, thank you, they're merely sent by regular mail and the reason for that is we had advice from the former attorney that we didn't need to send it by registered mail, that it could be just sent by regular mail. So the notice is sent out by regular mail.
And were there any responses to those notices, Tom?
Not that I'm aware of, Ed, I don't believe we got any responses. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I guess I'm wondering if maybe, maybe on our notification, we should step this up a notch and make sure that these people are actually, I mean, that they recognize that they're getting a notification, maybe a, maybe a registered letter or, or something that draws their attention to it. I, I guess, from my own perspective, if I'm outside of city limits and I'm looking at the legal notices and if it pertains to the city, I'm not sure I would recognize something that might have a direct impact on me just because I don't live in town. And obviously, if they were sent a notice and they overlooked it, that's one thing, if they didn't get it, then I guess we have no way of knowing that. But I guess I'm wondering if maybe as a, just more of a, just a sense of duty that we send a, a registered letter, probably, I think a registered letter does require a return receipt if I'm not mistaken. And that way, we would have a notice as well that the people were in fact notified and, and did in fact get the notification.
Yes, that, and we do have the circumstances, we have, I recall in the past when we did those, you might get those back, but sometimes a person might pass away or it, for some reason, isn't forwarded, we use the addresses that tax statements are sent to, to try to make sure we use the most verifiable address we could find. If we get them back, I'm not sure what the protocol would be after that, because we have had them returned without any indication of where they should have gone or in lieu of the address we had. So it, it certainly can be done that way, it does get expensive and that cost goes back against the district again, so that's part of the reason probably we haven't done it in the past, because it got quite expensive for some of the projects we did. But we can certainly reinstate that if that's a desire of the council.
You know, Ed, one thing that we've brought, we've had some prior discussions on it, on the front end of this type of project, it would have been up for three readings, correct? And I know a lot of times we're dealing with a situation where somebody has an issue on their property and you're trying to manage that, but I know one thing I've learned through this process is to be very cautious about waiver of readings, because I think that in some ways serves a similar purpose.
I totally agree, Tom.
I guess, I think the council members have gotten correspondence with regard to this matter and I'm not saying anything, Tom, I'm not arguing with you.
Right.
It's kind of an unusual situation in the sense that a property that has an assessed value of thirty-nine thousand dollars was assessed twenty-seven thousand in a sewer assessment. And, you know, that, that is, that's troublesome. The only comment I'll make, and again, I, I think we need to really kind of look at this, because this is not the first time people have come back on these assessments and say, well, I didn't get the notice. And, you know, you publish and the law requires you mail a first-class letter and I don't doubt that they get it sent. But, you know, a lot of times it ends up in the junk mail. I mean, you get something from a governmental agency, I mean, that's just the way people are. And I really, I think this should be probably reviewed again and we need to do a little bit better job in noticing.
Sure.
I realize it's more expensive and, Tom, I'm not criticizing anything you've done, you're doing according to our direction. This is a troublesome case and I don't know that there's anything we can do about it, but, you know, that's quite an assessment for this landlord.
Yes, and I, I understand, Ed, you know, there's a couple of circumstances, we did send it to the property owner of record and unknown to us, that property owner had just passed away. I don't know where or why we didn't receive anything back, but we didn't, that I'm aware of. And so the person that inherited the property apparently is the one that's affected by it. But it is a substantial assessment, as you know, and we've discussed, these assessments anymore are getting very high for anybody's property and it's very, very difficult. That's why land development's expensive to do and hard to do, because you have to do a big investment and you have a lot of investment in there before you even can sell a lot. So, yeah, it's gonna make it harder to do future extensions of any type because of the expense involved. And I, I sympathize completely with the people that are affected by this, I understand completely what they're saying. It's really tough. Absolutely, it's not, by the way, it's not fun to do either.
To help me out, Tom, how do we come about with the assessed value? Because I got the same correspondence that the business just next door, a couple of doors down, is seven thousand less. And it's valued at three hundred some thousand versus thirty-nine thousand, help me out here.
Sure, sure, we always take the cost of the district, all the costs are incorporated in the district, and divide that according to the front footage of the property that's abutting the improvement. And then you apply the same cost for everybody's front footage, whether it's the city or whether somebody's already previously assessed. And then the difference here is that the property that you mentioned that the people have been so terribly affected, frankly, was wider than the property that received the most benefit in a sense that they were the ones that requested the improvement. So it's just by front footage, it's just straight front footage and we apply it according to cost per front foot, that's, that's how we do it.
And, Tom, just to clarify, what you're saying is, this is done on a front-footage assessment, it's not based on analysis?
No, no, it's not at all, it actually, we have to be scrupulous in, in being careful to assign the same cost per front foot per the owner, regardless of owner, say. And we do have instances where if we are going through and we tear out somebody's driveway and they say, well, why are you here? Would you take out this much more? Then we will assess it to that particular property, because that's past what we would see as necessary to do the job. Otherwise, we only assess the absolute necessary components to complete a project. And, and the city, even on an extension district, whether it's sewer or water, doesn't matter, eats a lot of the cost, we, we pay a lot of money on districts, regardless of whether it's an extension district, an extension district, because when we cross right away, that's assigned to us. If we go by an alley, that's assigned to the city. So we try to do this very carefully and, and methodically and it needs to be reproducible and comparable from one district to the next. It's, there's much more philosophy that goes into this than what you think would go into, into assessments. It's, 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 it's more an art than a science, unfortunately, but it is.
And when you just look at this scenario, a three hundred and whatever, three hundred thousand dollars property value versus thirty-nine thousand property value, that's this huge difference.
But again, keep in mind, and it's simple to forget, but keep in mind that the benefit accrues to the property and not the property owner. So even though the property may be improved, the land is what it benefits, is the theory, not the improvements to the land, not who owns the land, not the status of that person or anything else. It's the land that is improved. And consequently, you have to look purely at what's the land that's affected. Whether that's a, pardon me, but a junkyard or whether it's a castle, it doesn't make any difference. You have to strictly look at the improvement to the land only.
Terry?
Yes, sir.
Just asking you a question, as far as we're concerned as a council, this front-footage analysis is all we can go by? We're not, are we authorized, do we have any statutory discretion on this at all?
Not that I'm aware of, Jim, unless there's some special procedure, and Jim Hoxton and I talked about it. I understand the concern and the plight of the resident and the taxpayer, but I, the only thing I'm aware of is the procedure that's in front of you. And I don't know that we want to be in a position of saying, here's, here's what you need to do and offering legal advice that could come back to be misconstrued in the event there's, as you know, tax protests are jurisdictional, have to follow precisely the letter of the law. So my suggestion would be, we've complied with the statute, with the ordinance and if the, again, with all due respect to the citizen who's been adversely impacted, that person wants to try to protest, I don't think we want to be in a position of saying, here's how you do it.
But we're also, we conduct a public hearing on the front end of this, right? I mean, like, for this situation, we had a public hearing on the, as the first step in this transaction or prior to any work being done, correct?
You know, I guess at the formation of the ordinance, unless Jim could correct me, but I believe at that point, there's possibility for input. I don't know that it's called a public hearing. You recall, Jim?
No, it's not, Tom, it's not advertised as public hearing. Because again, statutorily, we're required to provide service to those people when it comes to water and sewer if they request it.
So with that, just so I understand the process, so at that point, an ordinance comes forth to create the district, at which I think the practice of the city's been to allow public input in those, in those procedures, okay? Okay, thanks for clarifying that, Tom.
You're welcome.
And then that same statute then, Terry, it defines how the charges have to be assessed, is that correct? I mean, the statute obligates?
The city to do it, yes, absolutely, and it's certainly custom and tradition, it's the way it's always been asked, as long as I know.
I guess one other question for you, Tom. Is, is a registered letter the best way to notify these people or what are your thoughts?
I would say it is. I would, I would agree with that, Ed, I think a registered letter is a better way to do it, because it's more likely that it'll get through the postal system than conventional registered, commercial letters. I know I'm slammed on the postal system, but we've had problems with delivery and unfortunately, so I, I think a registered letter would do a better job of getting to where it needs to go. I would agree with that.
I was expecting an eight thousand dollar check that was mailed on the first of April and I got it on the nineteenth and the day before it came, I called the bank and had payment stopped. So, and it came from a cook, so I don't know that we can rely on the mail system very well.
Jim, go ahead.
Oh, it used to be that registered letter did not always require a return receipt, return receipt and actually cost an additional fee, postal fee. Is that still true?
Yeah, that's true.
You, you just.
It doesn't, there is an additional fee, you're right, Jim.
Yes. Yeah, okay, so I think that'd be the smart thing to do.
Do we need to offer any guidance to, to Mr. Werblow in that regards as a counselor? Or is that something that you can just take upon yourself to do?
Well, we can, if that's the, the advice of the council, certainly we can do that, I'd be glad to do that, you know. It would help us, because it doesn't help us to have people get surprised, I don't like it any better, any better than anybody else does, you know, to, to shock somebody with something, I, I really don't like that at all, because it's not helpful whatsoever for them or us. So, yeah, I have no problem with it.
Was that something, Dwight, that we probably need to put on the agenda for another meeting?
No, I don't think we need an agenda, I mean, we'll just do it.
All right.
How's that sound?
It's fine with me.
I agree with that.
We can just take care of that through our process.
They share that, that's pretty simple.
Yeah, we can implement that, we were acting on advice, like I said, of, of a former attorney, thinking to save money, et cetera, so.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Thank you, Tom.
You got it.
Thanks, Tom, there's a gentleman out there in the hall that would like to talk, I do believe.
Six foot. I'd like to give you six foot. Do we need a motion?
Uh, just a minute.
Yeah.
Would you be so kind as to give us your name and address, please?
Yeah, John Erickson, I live at seventeen oh eighty-sixth and I'm property belonging to my sister and I, I don't know what you want me to say, I do appreciate Mr. Lee, he did contact me back, that he did receive the, the memo, evidently everybody else did, and I really appreciate the fact that you paid attention to what, what it was. What it amounted to was, Mr. Steele talked to me, that's who we're talking about, that he was gonna pay for this. That it's no big deal, you know, they could have run it right past, right across the street. The concrete never crossed, never crossed the alley or never crossed a road. It was right in front of his place was the concrete, the concrete was broke up. The width of that sewer is only about this wide, wide is this, because that backhoe goes across it, they put in ten foot of new concrete on that. I think the, in the deal, it showed you the concrete was seventeen thousand dollars. It benefits nobody except him. And the way that I see that is, somebody's getting hosed here and I believe it's gonna be me. I mean, common sense should enter into this here, just the property value alone is what it is. His, he told me, he said, the reason that he was doing this was because his workers come to work and they couldn't do that at home, they'd have to use his sewer system there and he was having to pay to pump his septic tank. And that was his reasoning for this. Well, anybody, all you have to do is drive by there and take a look at it and it's that simple. You got a stretch of concrete, well, longer than this room and it's not ten foot wide. If you, if they do cross the street or cross an alley, whatever they do, and it wouldn't be right for the city or the the ratepayers to eat this concrete, but when it benefits a private drive for nothing more than, he didn't have to go the full length of it, he could have came right up to the edge of his property and joined that sewer right there. But no, no, he went on past it. And, I mean, common sense should enter into this here, I, I mean, the ratepayer, I mean, we, we did not get any correspondence on this. We checked, we checked her mailbox, we checked for things, because we're still settling her estate thing and all that. And we didn't receive anything on it. And my wife has worked for the, worked for the city for forty years or forty-six, whatever the hell it is. And she's familiar with sewer water and what it is and what the cost is and it's never run over fifty dollars a foot for a property. And I don't know how they come up with this, but regardless of it, the concrete alone is, is totally ridiculous. And all you have to do is, I, I sent pictures of it that you can see what it is. And what they did, the dirt, looks like my, the dirt work that they did is as wide as his concrete, well, it damn sure wasn't, because it just wide enough to drop the pipe in, is all they do, because they run over it with a backhoe, you know, and it just runs right along there and they take it right out of there. And this was just, like I said, it benefited nobody but him and I guess I'm probably getting close to my three minutes or whatever it is, but I, I think you guys would, I'd really appreciate you take a look at this and figure this out, because this is just wrong.
Good, thank you, so appreciate your time.
Hey, Tom, real quick.
Tom?
Hey, Tom. On our recent ones, to that last comment there, you know, that was the thing that stuck out to me, you know, to me, what has been the cost of these kind of extension districts per, per foot?
What the gentleman referenced, the hundred fifty dollars a foot would be typical for a side. This was an expensive project, part a lot of the money that we spent was on dewatering, because the groundwater is high enough, we had to build the sewer in such a way that to be able to, we had, it required dewatering and that's part of the reason for the width of it, because of dewatering, I'm sure, but that, that wouldn't be out of the, what we typically would do in a dry installation. So, yeah, I, I understand what he's saying and I understand his, his concern and, and his wife's concern, I understand that completely, but you know, when we do these assessments, there's, if you start trying to parse out everything, it really gets tough and and, you know, the problem is where the sewer was requested was past their property, so we had to go past their property to do this, the sewer installation we did and, and, and they got hooked in that district.
Who requested the property, who requested?
Uh, Mr. Steele requested.
Did we do this, I think we contracted this one out, right?
Yes.
And who did we use on this one?
Midlands, Midlands contracted it, yeah. We took bids and they were the little bidder.
On the determination of the width of the concrete, Tom, I presume that was based on a survey that you guys did?
Yes, yeah, they, they didn't take out anything, we didn't, wouldn't have told them to take out at the time. And I, I believe that it was necessary to be that wide because of the, that dewatering. The dewatering pipe has to be set up parallel with the pipe installation, so that when they excavate, the trench is dry, I want to go through. And that's the reason for the dewatering and for the trench width, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just tell, Terry?
Yes, sir.
The council, I mean, just look at our options, if we were to say, assess, as a council, that we want the assessment changed to be assessed for against steel because it benefit, is that legal or not? Or is that within our discretion?
I don't think, I can research that, Jim, and I'd feel more comfortable if you want me to research it and table it, but my initial reaction is no, that it's traditional, as Tom pointed out, it goes to the benefit of the property. But my initial reaction is no, that it's the traditional, as Tom pointed out, it goes to the benefit of the property, not the property owner. You know, while Mr. Erickson was speaking, it occurred to me perhaps his remedy is to go back to Mr. Steele. If he relied, if he in fact relied to his detriment on a promise that may or may not have been made. You, you know, and you understand that elements of detrimental reliance. If he's saying he would have done something differently, but for that promise, perhaps he has a claim against the joining property owner. I don't see that the council has much you can do at this point. I, I'm happy to research it to see if there's a different alternative. Unless Tom or Jim is aware of something. I'm, I'm not aware of anything.
Well, it's hard. I'm, I'm having trouble hearing you with this Darth Vader thing going on here, but.
I'm happy to talk to you afterwards if you want.
Yeah, because I just, like I said, I, it, all you have, just to look at it, I mean, you can't help but figure out what it is. And, uh, I don't do work for the city, but I know he does that, you know? I don't know if it's the good old boy thing or how it is, but I'd like to think it wasn't here, but it damn sure makes you wonder.
It sounds to me like maybe to alleviate any concerns that we should have Mr. Wade review this and make sure that we've got exactly what the statute requires and that way there's no discrepancy or misunderstanding. So with that in mind, I guess I'd make a motion. We table this till our next meeting.
Do you already have a motion to approve? Draw the motion because there's already a motion in the second to approve.
Right.
Okay, real quick. I mean, if you don't want to remove your second, I can remove the motion. We can table it.
But my question then, is there anything we can do about it?
They're going to do the research to see if we can.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion for a second.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we table this till our next meeting with the understanding that Mr. Wade will give us some further direction at our next meeting.
Appreciate it.
Missley?
Aye.
Backenstoss?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Carmen?
Aye.
Rieker?
Aye.
Ostendorf?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. John, thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate you guys.
Listen, that was, uh.
All right, item number seven. Action to approve ordinance number four zero three four to create clean energy assessment district to establish definitions to provide the financing administration and collections to promote energy efficiency improvements and renewable energy systems.
Would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes, please.
An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Platte, Nebraska to create a clean energy assessment district. To establish definitions to provide for the financing administration and collections. To promote energy efficiency improvements and renewable energy systems. And to provide for the effective date hereof and publication in pamphlet four.
Quick question. Uh, Terry, with item number eight, do we have to suspend in order to approve item number eight? There was no recommendation on it, but.
No, I don't think so.
You don't need to? Okay, cool. So I would move that we adopt ordinance number four thousand and thirty-four on first reading.
Ask a quick question?
Sure.
In, uh, in E two, the administrator of the program has the ability to waive an estimated economic benefit requirement in the program. How I, i- is, is the economic benefit of the program the, the diff- the utility savings versus the code standard?
Yes.
Okay. And so I was surprised to see that because the, the whole program is based, the cash flows are based off the increment between the code, um, energy cost estimate and the, and the greener method or the more energy efficient method. And so the waiver of that surprised me as us having, um, administrative discretion to alter that on an application. So I'd be interested in learning about that.
The only thing I would say to that tie is, is that somewhere along the line, in order to be able to put those estimates together and look at the type of equipment that would fall into this, whether it be insulation, HVAC, windows, doors like that. Somebody is going to have to do some kind of an economic analysis on it. So even though it, it allows you to waive that, uh, I would be very surprised if that's ever done. Uh, because again, somehow or another, you're going to have to know what that number is in order to be able to, to make your project worthwhile. The other thing I might point out, if you remember right, uh, it was back in, uh, October fourteenth of twenty nineteen when Mr. Peterson came in and presented this. And the first thing that came to my mind, uh, we have a, a motel developer who wants to use this as part of his finance package. But if you get into the, digging into the facts here, what I see is this is an excellent type of a product. It could also be used on projects like the Bonnie Hotel and some of our other buildings in the downtown area. Because you know that more than likely, you're going to have to go back in there. You're going to be looking at windows, doors, HVAC systems and those kinds of things. So I think, you know, I would remind the council to kind of look past, you know, the reason for this project being brought forward now and look at the future when you look at some of these older buildings that we have around the community that could very definitely take advantage of this type of, of finance.
Is this an annual approval?
No, once it's in ordinance.
So what did we do last October?
We didn't do anything. It was a work session.
Presentation.
Yeah, it was a work session.
And I, I did not have the benefit of hearing Mr. Peterson last October, but I did speak at length and my understanding is he's available tonight. He did not want to attend in person, but I understand he's available tonight if you have additional questions. This, this is followed statutory language. There's no risk to the city. Just an additional alternative means of financing.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the program. I just had a concern about an administrative waiver on what I thought, what it looks like the whole basis of the program. But I'm curious, maybe there's small things that pop up that you can't make an economic analysis on or things of that nature that you dealt with.
And that, and that could be, but like you say, somebody's going to have to put a pencil to that, you're right, before they go with it.
Well, I'm not going to hold it up on that issue. I just, it, it surprised me that you'd have the whole program and then they could administratively waive off that analysis on it.
Missley?
Aye.
Backenstoss?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Carmen?
Aye.
Rieker?
Aye.
Ostendorf?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Um, item number eight. Adopt resolution approving the city of North Platte, Nebraska property assessed clean energy pace program. A pace manual, a pace application and a pace contract form to use for assessment contracts approved by the city.
For the adopt resolution approving the city of North Platte, Nebraska, uh, property assessed clean energy pace program, a pace manual, a pace application and a pace contract or to be used for assessment contracts approved by the city.
Real quick question, Mayor. Um, we're, I didn't find the manual, the application, the contract. And so are, are we supposed to have those? Or as part, I mean, are we approving those as part of this?
I didn't realize those were not attached. I did send them to you just a little bit ago.
Okay.
But those are only examples. And it's up to the director to implement the final form.
Okay. Okay, so this is more just a resolution to have a manual and application and the form. Okay, then I'm fine. Thank you. I'll let it go separately. Thank you.
Missley?
Aye.
Backenstoss?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Carmen?
Aye.
Rieker?
Aye.
Ostendorf?
Aye.
Item number nine, third and final reading and action on ordinance number four zero two six to vacated twenty-five foot frontage road line north of the adjacent to the north line of lots five and six, block three, Metal Brook Estates, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes, please.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of North Platte Lake County, Nebraska, vacating a certain portion of a frontage road. Providing for the vesting of title of said vacated frontage road and providing for the effective date of this ordinance and publication thereof.
I move that we adopt number four thousand and twenty-six on third and final reading.
Second.
Missley?
Aye.
Backenstoss?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Carmen?
Aye.
Rieker?
Aye.
Ostendorf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number ten, third and final reading on action and action on ordinance number four zero two seven to rezone certain land from an A one transitional agricultural district to a RL suburban residential district located at thirty-three oh one South Bear Avenue described as lots five and six, block three, Metal Brook Estates and the proposed twenty-five foot vacated frontage road line north of adjacent to the north line of said lots, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes, please.
An ordinance of the city of North Platte Lake County, Nebraska zoning a portion of a vacated frontage road and lands in lots five and six, block three, Metal Brook Estates. Proposed twin dwell first replat, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. From an A one traditional transitional agricultural district to an RL suburban residential district. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict or with, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Move that we adopt ordinance number four thousand twenty-seven on third and final reading.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Missley?
Aye.
Backenstoss?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Carmen?
Aye.
Rieker?
Aye.
Ostendorf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, item number eleven, adopt resolution approving claims and authorize the issuance of a warrant to Nebraska safety and fire equipment in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five dollars, a warrant for cement product ink in the amount of ninety-two thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents. A warrant to Midlands contracting ink in the amount of one hundred and one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. And a warrant to Paulson ink in the amount of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-five cents to pay approved claims and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions ordinance number three eight seven four relating to warrant financing passed and approved on May twenty-first of twenty thirteen.
Move that we adopt resolution approving claims and authorize the issuance of a warrant to Nebraska safety and fire ink in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five dollars of warrant cement products ink in the amount of ninety-two thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents. Warrant to Midlands contracting ink in the amount of one hundred and one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine and fifty-five cents. And a warrant to Paulson ink in the amount of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-five cents to pay approved claims and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number thirty-eight seventy-four relating to warrant financing passed and approved on May twenty-first of twenty thirteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Missley?
Aye.
Backenstoss?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Carmen? Rieker?
Aye.
Ostendorf?
Aye.
And that motion passes as well. Item number twelve is claims.
Will we pay the claims?
Roll call.
Missley?
Aye.
Backenstoss?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Carmen?
Aye.
Rieker?
Aye.
Ostendorf?
Aye.
And that passes as well. And all we have left is an adjournment if anyone cares. Ian Hall?
Missley?
Aye.
Backenstoss?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Carmen?
Aye.
Rieker?
Aye.
Ostendorf?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time.